October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two session of the Norfolk County Commissioners to order. On Thursday, March twelfth, two thousand and twenty, Governor Charles Baker issued an order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass. General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty. That order was effective immediately, and until it is rescinded, all the state of emergency is terminated. On July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two, by the action of the legislature, that order was extended until March thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-three. Call this meeting to order. Would you all rise and join me in saluting the flag, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Republic of which stands one nation.
Thank you. All in all, roll. Permission to stay.
I am present by Zoom.
Permission of Collins.
Present. Hey, Dick, before we get going on this, do you want to give us permission to sign your name on the votes?
Oh, yes. Yep. It's fine. Yep.
Five o'clock is probably good. Five is probably good.
We have a call.
Somebody else is talking here. I can hear him.
That was Nancy. She's muted now. She's all set.
Okay, number three, minutes of the open session meeting of October twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two for approval as presented.
Looks okay to me, Peter.
Yeah, it's fine with me. I'll second your motion.
All right.
May have seconded to approve the open session meeting minutes of October twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two. While in favor, it is a vote. In the floor, we have a call for an executive session. Would someone like to make the motion?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I know I've been invited to it, but my original request, and I was told it was going to be an open session. So I really look forward to the discussions in executive session, but, you know, I just, you know, I just want to find out what's going on with the registry as far as negotiations and not be a part of negotiations. And really, for me, it's the registry has been excluded from the negotiating table. That's really what I want an answer to. I think that's more open session, but I'm hoping to at least find out what's the language, what's in there, what's been profited. And I know, you know, something was said by Director Cronin on September seventh, that, you know, we'd been informed, and I would respectfully disagree with his characterization on that. So I appreciate, I was told this is going to be an open session. I just really wanted an answer as to why the registry and the management team is excluded, but I'm hoping, again, my intent is to speak with the commissioners in executive session and have a constructive dialogue as to what's going on with negotiations.
Mr. Chairman.
Director Collins.
Originally, we were planning to have the register before you an open session after conversations with Labor Council. And given the current ongoing status of negotiations with the various unions, it was recommended that we move the conversation into executive section, given the ongoing discussions of collective bargaining.
I respect that.
Okay, and I'm going to declare as chair that open session would have a detrimental effect on bargaining position at this time. So I will entertain a motion to go into executive session, Commissioners. And presenting present at the executive session should we go into will be our counsel, Michelle McNulty, Register, and the Commissioners.
I'll make the motion. I don't have the exact verbiage, but I'll move it over to executive session for the reasons stated. And if we were an open session, it would be detrimental to ongoing negotiations.
Second the motion. Okay. Do you want to read the motion, Joe? Because I have it right here.
You need the exact motion?
I'll read the exact language, Dick, okay? Motion to go in executive session pursuant to Master and Law Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A subsection three to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union and union personnel. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the government's bargaining or litigating position as declared by the commission chair. So that's, that's, that's.
And number three is to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining.
Right.
In this case, no litigation, and the chair has declared that it would have detrimental effect. To go into executive session and take a roll call, Commissioner Stady.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Shay is going to vote yes. So Bill, to bring everyone back before we go into public session on item number five.
This is a public session.
Chair. We're almost there, Commissioner.
Okay, yeah.
Bill, are we all hooked up with it, everyone?
All set, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we're back on the record, our regularly scheduled meeting of October nineteenth. We're on item number five, public comment. Do we have any public comment for today's meeting?
Mr. Chair, if I may. Thank you again. I had written a letter on September seventh requesting a meeting and, you know, regarding union negotiations and negotiations, management negotiations. Did not get a response, wrote another letter. Commissioner Stady, I'll leave that for you. Wrote another letter on the twenty-ninth and did get a response to that second letter. And Director Cronin said that I would be speaking in open session. I appreciated that we went into executive session, but I wasn't here to negotiate or learn about the terms or the numbers or anything like that. And, and as you know, your executive session continued and I left. I just wanted to find out what was going on relative to the Registry of Deeds. So really, it goes back to that September seventh letter. I just want to know why an elected registrar deeds who's tasked with running the Registry of Deeds and my registry management team, including First Assistant Register Marguerite Lee, have been excluded from the negotiating table during these negotiations. Again, it is, it's ongoing, so I would like the courtesy of a response to that question. Is there, is it appropriate to get a response from, from anybody? And again, if it's a question, I think it warrants an answer. If there's not going to be any answer forthcoming, I'll point out, I heard at the Aggie School and saw it on a tape. I want to contrast how those negotiations were handled at the Aggie School as opposed to the Registry of Deeds. Besides the two school trustees, one of whom was the elected county commissioner, they were representatives of the school's management team at the negotiating table. So a second question I'd like answered is, why does the Registry of Deeds and its management team get treated differently? And then, while we're asking questions, I'll ask another one. Why has there been no response to date from County Director Cronin to an email sent to him dated June twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two from First Assistant Register Deeds Marguerite Lee that involved the taping by county officials of a telephone conversation about negotiations, which is a possible violation of state law? And additionally, while we're on Assistant, First Assistant Marguerite Lee, again, why, and she's the first female, First Assistant Register of Deeds in the county's history dating back to seventeen ninety-three. Why, again, Director Cronin gave these directives that we were excluded and we weren't going to be at the negotiating table. I ask why? So that's my public comment. I would appreciate a response at some point. If you need time to think about it, I respect that. But again, that was my comment, and I appreciate, Mr. Chair, that you allowed me to say that.
Great. Okay.
Thank you.
For any other public comment today out in Zoom land, or anyone else? Last call for public comment. We're going to go to item number six now, appointments. We have none. Number seven, all business. I have none. Number eight, personnel considerations. We have two with the agricultural school.
Dick, do you have that? Do you want to read it? I mean, do it.
I got it. Mr. Chairman, I'll move notice of contingency employment for Sabina Gill of Braintree as a substitute instructor for the rate stated effective ten twenty twenty-two. So moved.
Second. Motion made second. All in favor? Aye, it is a vote. Next.
I'll move notice of resignation for Maggie Mannion of Milton, Mass. as student worker at the rate stated effective ten eleven twenty-two. So moved.
Second.
Motion made second. All in favor? Aye, it is a vote.
That is all I have, and I do not have the payroll warrant, so Peter, I'll take yours.
He has the payroll warrant to his left ear. Commissioner Collins, number nine, payroll and expense warrants for approval. This includes today's opera awards.
Okay, so I'm going to read the warrant list. I'll move twenty-three dash sixteen payroll county in the amount of one hundred and forty-three thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and twenty-seven cents. So moved.
Second.
Motion made second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. Next?
Next is twenty-three dash sixteen eight payroll school in the amount of three hundred and thirty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars and ninety-two cents. So moved.
Second.
Motion made second. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Next?
Next is twenty-three dash oh four D, expense of the school in the amount of one thousand six hundred and forty-four dollars and eighty-five cents. So moved.
Second.
Motion made second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
The next is twenty-three dash oh four C, expense of the school in the amount of eleven thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty-six cents. So moved.
Second.
Motion made second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. Thank you.
Next is twenty-three dash oh four E, expense of the school in the amount of sixty-one thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars and seventy cents. So moved.
Second.
Motion made second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next?
The next is ten oh three dash twenty-three, expense of the county in the amount of three hundred and one thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty cents. So moved.
Second.
Motion made second. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Next?
The next warrant is twenty-three dash seventeen, ARPA Milton Award in the amount of two hundred and forty thousand dollars. So moved.
I'll second. I have a question later. I'll second it.
Motion, we're going to go back to it under opera.
Yeah, we're going to go back on these, right? Okay.
Aye, it is a vote.
Okay, the next one is twenty-three dash seventeen, ARPA Walpole in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars. So moved.
Second.
Motion made the second on opera for Walpole. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Next?
And last is twenty-three dash seventeen, ARPA Norwood in the amount of four hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars. So moved.
Second.
Motion made second. All in favor? Aye, it is a vote. Now we're going to go to number ten. Report on American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand and twenty-one, and if you have a question about the background of any of these awards, Commissioner or anyone, ask Director Cronin now.
Okay. Did you want to ask your question now, Commissioner, or do you want me to?
No, I just, I'm very, obviously, very excited and pleased as a Commissioner to see these awards every week. But what I'm concerned about, and I've seen a pat near, is we're seeing the same people. I'm seeing Milton, 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 Walpole, Walpole, Milton. Where are the other towns? Where are the other towns in our county? And why aren't they participating? That's, that's just, that's a red flag to me. Whereas it's disconnect. Where's Foxborough? You know, where's Sharon? I'm kind of, I understand Milton must have a pipeline to know our county, but this is like the, what, seventh or eighth award? It's great. I'm pleased, but I think we're not, maybe we need to kind of reach out and kind of reach out to these other towns because clock's ticking. That's all. I'm just concerned about that.
That's a great point, Commissioner. There are approximately six communities that have not entered an application into the portal yet. We have reached out to them at least on three occasions in the last several months to find out, do they need any assistance? Are they progressing? I'll call your attention to the town of Brookline, for example. We had the delegation for the select board in Brookline Inn, I believe it was early August, if I'm not mistaken. They explained that they're going through a comprehensive process that involve community surveys and pulling together their applications was quite burdensome, and I think they also had a leadership transition at the town manager's level that slowed them down. Furthermore, I believe Foxborough may be in a similar position. We've heard there may be some transition going on with our friend Bill Keegan, who we heard might be leaving. Now we heard he might be leaving later. There are several communities, Plainville is also coming to mind in Norfolk with leadership changes that may inhibit some of the activity, Dick, but I don't disagree with you, but it's not without lack of communication and connection with each of these communities. We've been trying to bring them along. You know, we knew early on when Mike Denhee was the town manager in Milton that they were planning to send in a variety and a multiple number of applications. This was their strategy all along, and I'm not surprised by Milton's continued path of awards that have more of a specific programmatic need, rather than the large awards like we saw for Stoughton last week. Every town seems to be different. But I just wanted to let you know, we have reached out to every single community at least three times, and we'll be sure to check, check back with them in the coming months. One of the communities you'll be able to scratch off your list as I proceed here with my remarks is the town of Westwood. They, we had a conference call with Chris Coleman and his team last month as they were planning to use their county ARPA funds for a new school project in Westwood. Since then, they have submitted their application and it was finally approved by all the auditors yesterday. However, Westwood has asked that their award be parked until early two thousand and twenty-three, when the project cost needs will be foremost, and they'll let us know when they need the check. So we have two awards in the portal right now, Needham's one, now Westwood, where the monies are approved, but they're not dispersed until the community needs them. This afternoon, you approved three additional ARPA awards. I'll briefly read them and the justification for each. The first was the town of Milton, excuse me, two hundred and forty thousand dollars under economic impact. This was a housing authority kitchen project. There were a number of kitchens in an old housing authority complex that needed renovations. So this particular cost will be reimbursement for those renovation activities within their housing units. The town of Walpole submitted a request similar, Dick Stady, similar to Milton. Walpole's been giving us quite a few awards of the smaller design. This one is two hundred thousand dollars. Excuse me. This one is a revenue replacement option that funds their governmental services, specifically equipment and maintenance costs in their building maintenance division. They're supplementing two hundred thousand dollars for their electrical plumbing, all our maintenance and general maintenance of their school-owned buildings and town-owned buildings. That's a revenue replacement plan. The last one was the town of Norwood, four hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars. As previously stated and approved, this particular item falls under the revenue replacement category. In this case, Norwood, which you may remember early on, was quite concerned about the revenue loss category. They're using these funds to backfill some lost income relative to their meals tax that was lost during the coronavirus pandemic. They're adding this to their balance sheet for FY twenty-three and obviously making themselves whole. So those items bring our total ARPA award for the county to thirty-six point eight million dollars. Those are sixty-first, excuse me, the sixty, it's six, so sixty-first, sixty-second, and sixty-third applications that you have approved. A total of a hundred and fourteen applications have been put into the portal to date. So our activity level remains high. Looking ahead, Commissioner Stady, I don't see a lot of activity in the newer communities. I can't tell you that we see some of those five to six communities looming. We will circle back with them to see where they stand in the coming months. So with respect to ARPA, that is all I have this afternoon. One item I do want to point out, we were contacted, as you know, by our ARPA partners in Barnstable, Bristol, and Plymouth County. They were looking for a multi-county commissioners meeting in November. They are currently looking at a new date, which is November sixteenth. It is a Wednesday. The commissioners typically meet here in Norfolk County on Wednesdays. I've just been in with Commissioner Shay. He's inclined to possibly move our meeting so that we may have our regular meeting either on a Tuesday or Thursday that week, so that the commissioners may go to Plymouth to meet with their partners in Plymouth, Bristol, and Barnstable, who are all confirmed. I believe there's a delegation of folks coming in from overseas that are also meeting with the commissioners down in Plymouth that day. So you are being invited to join them on, I believe, at eleven-thirty on November sixteenth, which is a Wednesday.
I thought, I thought that had come out as the eighteenth, no? I had the eighteenth in my calendar.
You're right, Dick. It did. And then yesterday I was notified by Plymouth County that they were trying to move it to the sixteenth because of the travel plans associated with the international delegation.
Okay.
Yes, right. It was a last minute change by our partner.
Okay. Where are we having this meeting?
Plymouth. We don't know the destination. I'm going to guess Plymouth, if I have to.
Okay, there you go.
So just as an FYI, looking ahead on your schedules, you may want to pencil that in. I'll work with Commissioner Shay to firm up the alternative date that week that we will conduct our business, whether it's on the fifteenth or seventeenth of November. As long as everybody's okay with that. Does that work for you, Commissioner Stady?
Or maybe we do a summer schedule and not meet that week and just put it all out the following week, but either way, that's fine. Yeah.
The following week is the day before Thanksgiving. Just remember that.
You're right. You're right. You're right.
More than I'd want to put a big bird on it, and we're certainly going to meet.
Yeah. Maybe, what time is that? What time now is the multi-county meeting going to be down at Cape, down at Plymouth?
Eleven-thirty.
Oh, yes. There's no way of having a morning meeting. So I'll defer to Joe. Maybe we do a Tuesday or a Thursday or something, but.
I'll let you know by next week because I want to make, you know, I like to be thinking a month ahead.
Yep, that's good. Okay. Thank you very much.
That is my update for ARPA, Commissioner Shay.
Okay, any other questions?
Three, Mr. Chair, just to point out the ever omnipresence of Commissioner Stady since the beginning of our meeting at one o'clock. Two of the six communities, one which he named drop, Sharon, has emailed us just in the last hour. So.
Right.
You asked the question, it happens. And I'd be remiss to note that Waymouth as well has a application going through the portal, so we're really down to only one or two communities that don't have something cooking.
Okay, that's great. That's why I ask these questions, see? Bill, I want to give these towns, I want a hundred percent. That's what we want. That's great. Thank you.
Next item is report of the county director.
We had a couple of. Any bid openings today? No bid openings?
We have no bid openings.
I'm sorry, no bid, no, no bid openings. I'm sorry.
Our contract awards. We do have a contract award.
Nancy. One thirty. It's Nancy.
Listen for the.
Twenty-five minutes, thirty minutes. Go ahead.
Okay, this is a recommendation to award the contract that the ARPA coordinated to William Galvin in the amount of thirty thousand dollars annually with the anticipated start date of this week and an anticipated end date of December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
And what's the start date on that, Nancy?
I would say this week, John.
Next Monday?
Monday would be more than likely.
Okay. This is the bataille position.
Yes.
Bird dogging some of this outward issues.
Can you get a motion on that?
Yes.
All right, I'll make that motion.
This is a contract.
Yes.
Motion made. Any, a second, please?
How many applications did you have on that job?
One.
And it was just advertised for a week. I'm kind of surprised it was so quick.
It was in the paper for two weeks. It opened, it opened yesterday. So for an anticipated award today, it was advertised for two weeks. I sent three of them out, and we received one response back.
John, did you conduct any kind of interview with the candidate?
I did not. In this case, we reviewed the contract response to, against the elements of the scope of contract, and we determined that he met the qualifications as posted. If you'd like to interview the candidate, we can bring the candidate in before you make the motion on the same. Or I can do it, I can do it for you if that's a step you'd like me to take. I'm happy to do so.
I'll second, I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
I'm going to be noted as abstaining, please, for the record, on that vote. Please note, I abstained. Because William Galvin is my state rep, and I feel it's kind of almost a conflict, so. Nothing personal.
Make that note. Thank you. Okay, Nancy, do you have anything else for us today?
She's gone. No. I would guess no.
That's my answer. Okay, thank you. Number?
You already did thirteen.
Number fourteen, report of the county director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yesterday afternoon, Attorney Scott Lopez and I joined our partners at the Department of Capital Asset Management Maintenance at the state via Zoom to discuss the next steps involved with the Quincy District Court's position. As the commissioners know, the county has completed its appraisal process. We've notified the state that our appraisal is in and completed. They allegedly have done this, done the same. During the conversation, members of DCAM wanted to know what the value of the appraisal was. Our attorney interceded and asked the state, how much are they willing to pay? There was a little bit of an exchange relative to the next steps, but the county did not disclose what it is willing to sell the property for against the appraised value. And instead, we said we needed some conversations with the commissioners about where to start with that number. We needed the authority to negotiate that figure. As the commissioners know, the appraisal has a value range associated with it. So if the commissioners would like to reach out to me independently, where Scott and I were looking to have a very brief Zoom meeting with you in short order, perhaps as early as Friday or Monday, just to address this one item. I know your meeting next week is packed up pretty good, and we were looking to get in and out on this item. So I'll reach you independently to figure out what is the best time to have this, this conversation with Scott. As you know, he's involved in litigation, and Friday was the best day for him. But we can't do any day next week after three P M. So I'll reach out to you independently to find out the best time to have that conversation.
Forgive me. I'm sorry. Forgive me. Can I extract it here for a minute? Forgive me. What was, what's the reason again for the conversation? What did he want to bring us up to?
As the commissioners know, the appraisal that we received from QZAC and Associates included a range of value.
Okay.
Just an executive session. The state wants to know what our offer is. And so we want to speak with the commissioners about what value you would like us to begin that dialogue with the state on.
Wouldn't it be the higher the better? I mean, why?
Attorney Lopez has some thoughts on this based on his experience of these types of negotiations, and he felt it was important to bring the commissioners into this first step.
How much time does he need to talk to us about our range?
I would imagine it's about fifteen minutes.
Yeah.
Before a tracted dialogue. In any event, we felt compelled to at least circle back with the commissioners and let us, let them know the state wants to know what we're willing to sell it for, and we all just need to be on the same page.
Okay. It came to a morning. Has to be an afternoon, John?
Yes, Scott was looking for P M. because he's in court, excuse me, in the afternoon, in the mornings, excuse me.
Okay, I'll get back to you.
Sure enough. Just a statement, I thought Norfolk County shined this past Sunday. I want to extend thanks to Commissioner Shay, who acted as the master ceremonies and for the dedication of the debt of Superior Court. Our folks in facilities, Assistant Director Bill Buckley and others did a lot of work to help Commissioner Shay and Congressman Delhun enjoy a really wonderful day. And the county properties and our county government really shined, so wanted to put that out there.
You did a great job, Joe.
Thank you. I, you know, this, this committee probably started a year ago and you meet and you come right down to the, to the last day, and everyone pitched in, and it couldn't have been a nicer day. There was, the program was lengthy, but I don't see under the conditions of who was there, who spoke, that we could have kept it any closer. And I don't think the building has ever looked better. It's just a combination of things, the million dollars we spent on the roof.
Million five.
Million five, okay. Plus the minor things that John McGowan and his crew did with the cleanup, and it all dovetailed in, and everything really shone and looked great. And we'll put that behind us, and that's the William D. Delhun, the Berry Courthouse.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. The Wallace Recreation Facility.
Nice job by Chairman Shay on handling on that difficult job Sunday show. Good job, really.
The Wallace Recreation Facility work is proceeding. The paving work has started this week. Early next week, we expect the playground vendor to be on site, beginning the build out of that space. Expected to take one, maybe two weeks, depending upon weather. The county director's office continues to sponsor weekly technology meetings with staff associated with the consolidation. Currently, I wanted to announce that this Friday, the commissioner's office staff will be seeing a cutover to Office, Microsoft Office three sixty-five. This transparent update will have no effect on the user's experience. It's just merely providing a higher horsepower, more conforming software system for us to run our office software. Our CIO and network administrator interviews are continuing. We're wrapping up a second round of interviews on CIO this week. The network administrator, I think we have one more before we'll probably make a recommendation. The network administrator, I think we have one more before we'll probably make a recommendation for hire on that position. Um. And also, um, acting CIO Dan Caprada is keeping, uh, minutes of our weekly, uh, tech meetings. We've been doing this for several weeks now. Uh, the registrar of deeds has CC'd on them. If the commissioner, uh, commissioners have any interest in seeing any of these meeting minutes, just let me know all for them to, so you could see our weekly progress. Working on consolidated items as recommended by the Ripples Group, as well as troubleshooting and, and working on, um, um, technology matters as they affect the, affect the county. Um. We are scheduled on November second, Commissioner Stady, to welcome our friends from this great town of Stoughton uh, to receive a ceremonial check for the award you made last week on ARPA. Um, and next week, as you indicated, as I indicated earlier, you have a robust agenda. Um, I just wanted to alert the cust, um, commissioners, excuse me, that the Walpole Select Board or members thereof may be attending, um, likely virtually. Um, as the commissioners discuss the matter involving, um, the solar project at the agricultural school. The Walpole Select Board had an interest in having members of the commissioner staff down to one of their upcoming meetings, and after speaking with Attorney Lopez, as well as the town administrator Walpole, um, it was recommended that the commissioners stay the course, have their, um, discussion next week relative to that matter. And, uh, welcome any members of the Walpole Select Board, uh, to that forum so they can hear in on the conversation and decisions that the commissioners are expected to make. Uh, that is all I have at this time, uh, Mr. Chairman, relative to my report this week.
Thank you.
Quick, quick question, if I could.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Sorry. And I know, John, you were out last week sick, though. I just, I, I didn't have a chance to even call you this week. Uh, going back to one of my other favorite topics, Stoughton District Court. We visited it about a month ago, and there were some stillings left hanging in terms of remote control of certain of the heat. Where do we stand on that? There was a question about, uh, the contractor was going to do it, then they didn't do it. Then maintenance was going to take a look at it. What's happening with that? Could you fill me in?
Yep, no, you're right. Um, yep, there were, there basically have been two iterations of punch list updates from the vendor. The first task was to bring our, uh, engineer back on site. Crowley Engineering assessed all of the items, um, left behind after the installation. They prepared the punch list and shared it with, uh, Ambient, who is the vendor of choice on that, on that project. Um, Ambient has done some of the work. I reviewed their punch list earlier this week. I believe there is two to three additional items still needing closure, um, relative to the installation commissioner. Uh, this morning, John McGowan sent me a brief update. I haven't had a chance to look at it yet, but suffice to say, the number of items that are remaining on the punch list have, uh, winnowed down to just a couple. Um, so I believe we're getting closer and closer to finalizing that particular project. But, uh, thank you for the follow-up question. There has been a fair amount of activity. Our engineer, as well as vendor, have been busy at work trying to, uh, resolve the remaining items.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Item number fifteen. Any other items or topics? Not reasonably anticipated. Do we have anything else?
No.
I have nothing else. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Will we adjourn at two seventeen?
Second. Motion made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.